We called our meeting to order. We appreciate all of you that are here this morning if you would join us by invocation. Then we ask Mr. Cacken, don't leave us in our place. Kind heavenly Father, we thank you today for all the many blessings that have been ours to enjoy. We recognize that you know all things and we pause in our busy life to recognize thy sovereignty in this world and in the world to come. We ask Father that you would bless all that are here today. Bless our many in buried communities. Help us, Father, to be able by thy divine grace to look unto thee who is the author and finisher of our faith. We pray, Lord, for our nation. We pray for the leaders of our nation. In this that we ask for them, we ask for this body that are assembled around this table this day. Lead God direct us, accept thy thanks for all things. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Amen.
Please place the flag. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, B.C. Please.
Good.
Can we welcome you to our meeting this morning? First item of business is to prove the minutes from our last meeting. I think all of you can see that the emails are interchanged and needs to be made in them as you receive them. If not, I'll solicit a motion that we accept them as you receive them.
So moved.
Your second. Motion second in discussion. Minions favorite. Let me know when saying aye. Anyone opposed that objection. Thank you. The first item under new business, Road Department Maintenance Update, Mr. Broal.
Good morning. I'll be as brief as I can. I have several different things to go over with you this morning. As far as the maintenance update, we are still hauling shirt out of the property we've bought at Collinsville. We've only missed one day of hauling because of the rain, the day that we received the heavy rain all day. We did not haul that day, but we have managed to be able to haul every other day. We've been working on some roads in District Four and we're moving back today when we finish the last one up this morning. Going to move back to District Two and start back on some roads there. I think District Three crew have also had a couple of trucks and have been doing some work in their district also. So we're going to continue on with that. We have all three of our patch trucks going out each day. We're floating those around between the four districts, keeping them on the road, making pretty good progress with them. Also have several crews doing some hand patching. Our crews have started back now with bush hogs. I told them to try to get around and kind of clean up if they could as quick as they could. I think some of them are also doing some bush cutting, beginning to since we've got a little bit of rain. That's about all I have for you in the way of an update. That's the main things we have going on.
Thank you, Mr. Broal. Any questions, comments, Mr. Broal?
About one comment. It has nothing to do with maintenance update, but I hope perhaps this information will get out into the community. We'd intended to pay the section of road on County Road 209 and 11 in community with asphalt this year. Due to the abrupt change in the weather conditions, it appears that it's just not prudent to try to do that this year. It just wouldn't stick. It wouldn't stay in place. And these kinds of road projects have to last many, many years. So we're going to delay that until next spring for better conditions and warmer weather. And I'll attempt to contact people in the community who were expecting this, to let them know what's transpired. But perhaps if you run across anyone, just let them know. It's just a matter of trying to use taxpayers' money more wisely.
Thank you, Mr. Cacken. Any other question?
I may also state during the update here, County Road 89, they're doing a sealing treatment on that road. They may actually have completed that, but if not, then they'll be completing that in the next couple of days. It will have some loose gravel on it for the next few days that has to work down into the cracks and stuff and into the substance that they spray on it. And that's going to be kind of a hazard for a little while, but just want everybody to know that that is important, that that stays on there while the traffic runs over it and helps work it in for a few days. And then we'll get out there and try to get it swept off, you know, when the appropriate time. But they are, they have been working on that. So anybody that travels County Road 89, just be aware of that. It's going to be a little bit hazardous for a little while, but it will get a lot better.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Any other question? Come. Go ahead, Mr. Broal.
All right. Next thing we have on the agenda is a timber bid. I had talked to you earlier, mentioned to you about property we bought at Collinsville. Has quite a bit of standing timber on it. I would like to go ahead and just solicit bids on the removal of this. There's a couple of different ways we can do it. We can just solicit a lump sum amount that they'll pay for the usable timber on it. Or we can request a percentage of what's removed from it. They'll give us a percentage of each load that's removed.
Mr. Broal, let me just say this. I know there's two ways, but don't you think a lump sum would be the best route?
Well, the thing is, if you go with a percentage of it, and you would hope that you're dealing with reputable, honest people with scruples and morals, but we're not going to be able to put a monitor down there to monitor the loads that go out. And you'd have to actually have a monitor at the scales where they weigh in. This stuff's sold by tonnage. So a lump sum to me would be the simplest way, because like I said, I cannot put a monitor there to monitor every load that goes out.
Mr. Cacken, I believe it's your district, isn't it?
Yes. I've sold timber both ways. My experience is that if you have the people to monitor, you actually come out better. But otherwise, somebody gives you a lump sum, they're going to play it safe and make sure that they don't lose money. But in this case, you're right. It just makes better sense to have a lump sum basis.
I don't, of course, I don't cruise timber for a living or anything, but I don't know how much is there. I've got an idea of what I feel like may be there. There's also some timber remaining on the 80 acres that we purchased earlier. And I'd like to go ahead, I'd like to do it in two, to give us two proposals. One on the last 40 we bought and then one on the previous 80 that we own also. Really, this timber is just in our way. And there's way too much of it for us to push up in a pile and try to burn or just to let it rot. There probably will be several thousand dollars worth of timber on this. So it'd be a lot easier for me. We're going to have to be doing permit work. We've got to build a sediment pond. And so it'd just be a lot easier on us to get the timber removed. We can deal with the stumps and the brush. That won't be a big problem. But I'd like to just go ahead and maybe send this out to at least three or four different people and just solicit seal bids, I guess, on it for the purchase of this timber.
Is agreeable commissioners to proceed in this manner? Mr. Cacken, don't leave it on saying aye. Anyone opposed that objection. Thank you.
Yes, sir. You may.
Mr. Broal, when you seek the bids, each of the companies will project what they anticipate the amount of timber to be. And therefore, you can, you have something at least to compare between them.
Yeah.
Okay. Not that that's any of my official business as attorney, but that's my thought pattern in dealing if we should have a problem.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Broal. Any other question?
My point out that each, each one of these people will have to have the appropriate levels of liability insurance to.
Yeah. These companies are, they're always, I mean, they always cut timber off somebody else's property. So these things, I think, will be standard for them to have the liability and workers comp depending on the employees, the number of them that they have.
When you receive all of this, just bring it back to us.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Broal. Personnel?
All right. Have a couple of personnel items. Have one opening. I'd like to post an opening at the Road Department and the unit crew. I dismissed probationary employee last week. I'd like to post that position to be filled at the next meeting.
Do you hear, Mr. Broal's recommendation? Any question concerning that? If not, do you hear a motion? The Honors request?
Make a motion. We aren't a request.
Your second.
Second.
Motion second in discussion. Minions favorite, let me know when saying aye. Anyone opposed that objection. Thank you.
And also, I posted a position for District Four. I'd like to say we recommend Wade Williams for that position.
I believe it's your area. Mr. Jackson?
Yes, sir.
Do you hear a motion that we honor requests?
Yes, sir. I'll make a motion.
Your second.
Second.
In discussion. Minions favorite, let me know when saying aye. Anyone opposed that objection. Thank you.
I have one other thing I didn't get on the agenda. I have a list, and I think I've given all of you. I don't think I got Ricky a copy, but I have a list of surplus equipment and some trucks that I'd like to add to, we put in the spring auction. Have a 95 model international truck. This is what we previously used as a signed truck. You know, we bought a truck from Carlin Porous Trucking here a few months ago to replace this with. We really don't have a need for this truck. It's an old truck. We bought off State Surplus about 10 years ago, and it needs to find a new home. So I'd like to put that, declare it surplus. Also, we have a Ferguson roller. This is an old double drum paving roller. It's not a vibratory compactor, just a steel drum roller that we, since the purchase of our new roller, we don't have a need for it. It also is getting old and obsolete. It needs a new home. I have four Massey Ferguson tractors. These are the four that we're pulling our Batwing Bush Hogs with right now. As you know, we have ordered new tractors to replace these. Then you have the four Batwing Bush Hogs that are separate. They have their own serial numbers and inventory numbers. Like to declare all those surplus. We have a road grader, and we talked about this earlier. It's an 88 model, or an '06 model CAT grader. It's actually a ninth grader. It's kind of a spare that we have kept around and really don't see a need to keep it. And hours on it are getting to the point that when it goes over 5,000 hours, we've seen before, that it really starts hurting the price of it at auction. So I'd like to go ahead and get rid of it. We have another Massey Ferguson tractor. This is actually an '03 Massey Ferguson that still has a bush cutter on it. We'd kept it for a spare when we cycled out these machines before and bought these John Deere's running now. This thing's been out from other shed one time. Since we bought those new tractors, I actually carried it to the Chert Pitt and did some work with it down there. So I really don't see a need to keep it. I think we might as well just go ahead and get rid of it, too. So that would be my recommendation to declare all these things surplus and include them in the auction this spring.
Gentlemen, you hear Mr. Broal's recommendation. I know all of you know I have two now of the equipment to declare the surplus. Is there any question about, if not, do you hear a motion? The Honors request?
So moved.
Your second. Motion second in discussion. Minions favorite, let me know when saying aye. Anyone opposed that objection. Thank you.
That's all I have for you.
Thank you, Mr. Broal. We appreciate it. Engineering, AlDOT Resolution, Mr. Luth.
Good morning. The Department of Transportation has preliminary plans, which they have provided me a set of, plans to construct a new bridge on Highway 117 across the railroad at Valley Head. As part of this, the intersection of 117 and County Road 137 will require a little bit of realignment. Basically, the state is proposing to build a new bridge about 200 feet back south of the existing bridge on the Fort Payne side, and will push that intersection back up 137 about 200 feet. The basic layout will be the same as it is now, coming in at that angle with a large, large turning radius there. But typically, what they do as part of this, when they include county or city streets, they like to have a resolution authorized through the governing body that kind of lays out some of the rules and requirements or basically just saying that the commission, you know, is okay with them performing this work within our own right of way. Just some of the basics of it is that the Department of Transportation has full use and access to the dedicated wits of the streets and right of ways, and that they can barricade or close off certain portions as they need. There shouldn't be anything that needs to really happen. Everything they'll be doing will be kind of off to the side to start with. And typically, it's also stated any roads that are cut off or, you know, barricaded off, you know, we would be responsible for, which there won't be any of that. Most of the things included in here do not pertain to this particular project, but this is the standard things that they, you know, ask to be done as far as, you know, what we would be responsible for or have action with after the project or during the project. So they're just requesting that the commission pass this resolution stating these, these conditions for this particular project. So I'll bring that before you.
Here, Mr. Luth's statement. Any questions? Turns out, Mr. Wood, I believe it's your area.
Yes. Like you said, this is just preliminary work. That will be a tremendous help for that area. Anybody that's went across that bridge in the past little while knows that it's very tight and very dangerous. And I'm glad that the state is looking to do that. This is just preliminary work. So we need to go ahead and sign off on this so they can make their plans. So I recommend we accept the resolution.
Yeah, Mr. Wood's recommendation for the resolution. Motion is their second.
Second.
Motion second in discussion. Minions favorite, let me know when saying aye. Anyone opposed that objection. Thank you. That's the recommendation so stated, you know. Thank you, Mr. Luth. EMA Storm, update, Mr. Clifford.
Good morning, gentlemen. Seems like we have one disaster right after the other. The last meeting, I believe you, Mr. Posey was here and discussed our drought situation with our fires then. And since then, on the evening of November 29th, National Weather Service issued tornado watch for us about 8:00 PM. Then about 13 minutes after midnight, November 30th, they issued us a tornado warning for northern DeKalb County. The final estimate was that it was an EF3 storm. Actually, began as, the beginning of the storm was an EF2 storm over in the Rosalie community. And then they felt like that it had gone back up and come back down into DeKalb County as an F3. However, they have since joined the two tracks together. So it's now considered a long track F3 storm that began in Jackson County and came over into DeKalb. The storm really kind of began where, right where the county line intersects with Alabama Highway 117. And the track continued on until it went off the mountain into Deerhead Cove where that concluded the damage and then on across the Georgia line. All total, DeKalb County suffered $3,073,100 in damage. That's total assessed value. That includes 16 destroyed residences, two major damaged residences and two minors, for a total residential impact of $1,037,300. Then, we lost 20 barns and outbuildings, one church, four hog houses and 13 poultry houses, for a total of $2,035,800. So that's where we come up with $3,073,100 in total damage. Unfortunately, with all that damage, we did not get a presidential declaration. We did not meet our local threshold, which is $153,000, I'm sorry, $253,000. That's based on a per capita assessment. I believe it's like a dollar and 69 cents for the county per person. So that's where we come up with the 253,000 for the local. And even if we had sustained enough, and of course, keep in mind, you say, well, we've got $3 million. Surely, well, the deal is that 253,000 has to be an uninsured damage. That's the problem, is that there were a number of people, a lot of people, were underinsured, but they had insurance. And it's an all or none proposition with FEMA. Either you do have insurance or you don't. And if you do, it don't count. So that, that's how that worked out. Plus, we did not have enough to meet the state threshold, which is about $6.7 million. I'm sorry, $7.6 million, which is also a formula that FEMA's based. And it's like a dollar and 39 cents per capita. So 7 million people in Alabama, that puts us, you know, just over $7 million in total damages. So we didn't qualify for either public assistance, individual assistance, but we did, we do qualify for Small Business Administration assistance, SBA loans. We did not meet the criteria. They were trying to get us, Jackson and Winston Counties all declared as, under SBA. And basically, that would have joined everything from the Georgia line to the Mississippi line together. But the only county that actually qualified for even a SBA declaration was Jackson County. But since we are a, when a county gets an SBA declaration, it qualifies all the contiguous counties around it to receive SBA. So all of the counties, including those in Georgia and Tennessee that touch Jackson County, qualify for SBA low interest loans under that declaration. You know, to kind of tell you how the storm itself went, this was the biggest storm we've had since 2014, when we got the declaration after the Aroni tornado. And of course, previous to that was 2011. But we made it, we had a significant difference in the response this time compared to storms in the past. And we've made a lot of changes, and it has really improved our response. We had people here. Matt Martin and I both were here at the EOC when the tornado watch came out. And within 15 seconds of the National Weather Service issuing the tornado warning, the new computer system that we purchased from grant money after the big storm in 11, the computer system automatically set off the sirens in the north end. We now set off our sirens by area, not countywide. It's not an all or none. So if any of you hear, you know, questions, because that's relatively new. It's something we did in 2014 when we installed that system, is rather than setting all the, all of the sirens off, we set them off by polygon now. So whatever area of the county the storm is in, and so that means if it starts in the south end of the county, as the storm moves, those sirens will go off. But in this case, it only set off the north end sirens, and so it did its job. By 2:00 AM, we had, we had personnel on the ground from the EMA office. Mr. Posey was out and established command there at Iter Town Hall. I do want to appreciate Mr. Harkrow's help. He was in the office by 2:00 AM down here with us. And we asked him to sign an emergency declaration, which he did, issuing a state of emergency for the county effective at 2:00 AM, which gave us permission to call up the remainder of county assets. And of course, we passed it on to the governor for a request for state of emergency from the state, which we did receive on Wednesday. We had, and comparing this to say the storm 2014, we really didn't get into damage assessment. We didn't get into incident stabilization until two days after the storm. In 2011, it took us almost four days to get into instant stabilization. But on this particular storm, we began instant stabilization by 4:00 AM. I mean, literally, within four hours of the storm happening, we had began to make plans on getting people help. And so we're really, really proud of that. We had, the Road Department responded very quickly, began opening roads. We had responders from all over the county, from DeKalb ambulance, from the sheriff's office. Sheriff did an excellent job helping us with instant command. And something that's really, you know, that we're really proud of is that Mr. Wilks, with the Revenue Commissioner's office, when we redid the emergency operations plan a few years ago, we had asked that the Revenue Commissioner become the damage assessment officer for the county. Damage assessment's always been one of those tough things, because, I mean, as soon as the wind quits blowing, the governor's office and State EMA wants to know what the numbers are. We need numbers. We need damage assessment so they can start on that declaration process. Well, like I say, in 2014, it took us almost two days to get started. Well, in this particular storm, we called Mr. Wilks, and of course, he was, I believe, on vacation?
In Florida.
He was in Florida. But we woke him up with everybody else. But his people were on the ground by 8:00 AM Wednesday morning. And we actually had numbers in hand by dark that afternoon. We had our first round of assessment, which was, which changed very little. They were at like 2.9 million, and final number was just over three. So within pretty much in 16 hours from the storm, we had, we had the beginnings of numbers in hand. And that's a significant difference. And of course, the state and the governor's office asked us how we did it, and we explained to them our process. And now, those of you who were at, who heard Art speak last week at the legislative conference, has used us as an example of how storm damage assessment should be done. And so I really want to thank Mr. Wilks' team for that and make sure that, you know, that everybody knows it's not just something EMA does. It's, you know, we call on all the assets at one time. But so, we did have the state EMA director in town by Thursday afternoon. We did a conference call. Mr. Harkrow and myself and the sheriff did a conference call with the governor on Thursday afternoon. And then the governor was here on Friday. Is that right?
Yeah.
Yep, on Friday. The governor was in town and had some really good comments. We began by Thursday afternoon. We had begun to get into full-scale recovery, meaning that if you look at a storm and kind of the way it goes, you've got your response, and then recovery begins, that incident stabilization, trying to get, make sure everybody's got a roof over their head, and we've got tarps out and those kind of things. And then it goes into long-term recovery. Well, we were into recovery by Thursday afternoon. Within two days, we made sure that everybody had a roof over their head. They had something to eat. They had a place to stay. And we were well into that by Thursday afternoon. By Saturday afternoon, we had, the EMA, we turned it over to the volunteers. We came back and of course, we started, we're still in rehab mode. We're still getting our equipment back, putting it, you know, getting it ready to go again, making sure that everything's good. And so we're doing that, the final parts of that today. Now, with Mr. Harkrow's permission, we did receive a request from Jackson County to help with air recovery. And so we sent our volunteers and some of our equipment to Jackson County, including the sheriff. Sheriff sent his big tent over to Rosalie to help them. And Jackson County has expressed their appreciation there. I talked to both Mike, the EMA director over there, and Mr. Hodges, the county commissioner. And he wanted me to express their appreciation to you for allowing us to do that. With all this said, I believe that's the biggest highlights of the storm. We did have, we actually had two, we've already had two LTRC meetings. Had one on Friday afternoon at Ider, had one yesterday. And so officially, as of yesterday, our recovery efforts are over as far as EMA is concerned. I mean, we will support grants, equipment, that kind of stuff. But we've actually turned it over to the Long-Term Recovery Committee. We're still not sure about unmet needs. We know that there are about five families that we believe will have some unmet needs in DeKalb County. We don't know about Jackson. We're working very close with them, similar to how we did after the Geraldine Pisgus storm and the Silvania Rosalie storm of 2009. So we're doing recovery as a community, not as, it really doesn't matter to us. it over to the Long-Term Recovery Committee. We're still not sure about unmet needs. We know that there are about five families that we believe will have some unmet needs in DeKalb County. We don't know about Jackson. We're working very close with them, similar to how we did after the Geraldine Pisgus storm and the Silvania-Rosalie storm of 2009. So we're doing recovery as a community, not as, it really doesn't matter to us, particularly because we didn't get a declaration. Those numbers don't matter. But our LTRC is looking at writing a grant for some governor's emergency relief funds that we believe that we will qualify for since we didn't get a declaration. But really, the only piece of action I need from you is, I need a resolution to approve the state of emergency that Mr. Harkrow signed on the 30th, just to make that final. And otherwise, did you have any questions, anything I can answer for you?
Mr. Clifford, let me just say this. I was there during all that time, and I just want to compliment you and our staff and Mr. Wilks and all others that had a hand in doing that. I watched it all, and it's so impressive. As Mr. Faulk said at the meeting in Montgomery last week, they're using you all as an example of the way things should proceed. And it was a great feeling to see you all work in the manner that you did, and I appreciate it very much. But not only that, I want to compliment our volunteer agency. You mentioned that, like the rescue squad, the fire departments, all of them there, all over the county that centered on this tragedy, because I shudder to think where we'd be without all those people. The Idar Rescue Squad, we've helped them with this over the years. They've got a full-service kitchen up there. They can provide for hundreds of people, the way they're set up up there. And they're the only one in the county that's set up that way up there. And they're a great example in providing for those who are victims of such tragedies. And I just want them to know as well as you all how much we appreciate that. Gentlemen, I did sign that declaration to be approved retroactively by you all, like normally, we always do that. But I know you all have plenty to say about that, but I was there and watched them, and it was a privilege to say that you're part of our organization, and we thank you for all that you've done.
And I do appreciate those kind of words, but just, you know, this is a system, you know, and we've come a long way in the last five or six years, particularly since the big storm of 2011. And, you know, but it is, it is a system, and it's everybody working together, you know, especially the road department. I got, Mr. Brawls up, and he had his crews out about 3:00 AM or so. But they worked very hard, the sheriff, all of his people, and somebody that we sometimes miss, but these individuals worked very hard, and that's our inmate workers as well. We had three crews of inmate workers out helping during the storm, and they did some magnificent work. Those people are working to pay their debt and did a magnificent job for us, and I want those people to understand that that's a great service they've done for the county. But you're right, the volunteer, our volunteer organizations, we have just began to get our organization together. It's called VOED, Volunteer Organizations Active in Disaster. That's been a while coming, and it's still slow, and we still want to get that together, but it has made that response effort so much smoother. I mean, we had those people organized, and we're out the door literally by daylight. So, but thank you so much, sir.
Gentlemen, any comment?
I'd like to add too, our appreciation to all these involved. Anthony Phippen is a prime face of work when it comes to somebody in place. When you've got people in the proper places that have a heart to serve this county and do the job y'all do, we appreciate it. Tommy Brawls, Tyler, the sheriff's office, thank y'all for what y'all do, and you do it because you're here. Appreciate you.
Thank you so much, sir.
In my other life, I have a significant number of clients in the affected areas, and while none received damage, they were amazed, the number of people that contacted me to express how impressed they were with the efforts, how quickly the response was, and how efficient it was, and how much they appreciated having this type of organizational structure available to help them, because some of them were very close but weren't affected. I mean, it's word of mouth will spread how good this was. Thank you so much for everything you've done, and the others as well.
I'll reiterate what they're saying. Really appreciate what you do. I've had people in the past ask, you know, exactly what is the emergency management agency and what you do. This is a great example of the good job that y'all do, to come together and manage what's going on, where people are, where the need is, getting people to them. That night, I stayed out of the area to stay out of the way, but it kept the scanner on to listen, and it was very impressive to listen to the scanner traffic, how y'all created the, I guess, the hub there at Idar, and everybody was communicating together. And so everybody knew where everybody was at, knew where the need was, and I think that's... You know, y'all go through a lot of training. We were all-time approved in training and schedules, and when you get to looking at all the information that you give us, sometimes it kind of crosses your eyes if you don't really understand what's going on, but it's all part of the process, and I really appreciate the job that y'all did there, and the road department as well, and the sheriff. You did mention that we did qualify for some low-interest loans.
We do. Now, the SBA, and keep in mind, that's another thing that any of your constituents call. It's countywide, anybody who receives storm damage from this, and people say, "Well, I'm not a business." It's SBA declaration, and it's only because the SBA, Small Business Administration, administers the loans, okay? Anybody qualifies for it, everything from businesses to farms. I think they'll go up to $2.5 million and all the way down to hundreds. And the reason we do this, these are extremely low interest. I don't exactly know what they are, but I mean, they're like in the 1% to 2% range. And what this is for is, let's say that you've got somebody who is underinsured. Maybe they had a house, and they had, they were able to replace their home, their home was completely destroyed, but all of their furnishings, their clothes, everything's gone, and they don't have enough money to refurnish their home. Rather than going out and swiping a credit card or taking out a personal loan at, you know, 22%, 23%, 29%, they can go to the SBA and get a loan for 1% to 2%, you know, that will do the same thing. And that's what this is for, is to help fill that gap back if you're underinsured or have no insurance, but, you know, can qualify for the loan. And it's relatively, and they're relatively liberal with this. You don't have to have perfect credit as such, so it's really intended to help that community get back up on its feet, is what those are for, so.
Can we get like the phone number, something put on the Facebook page?
We can, as a matter of fact, we're supposed to have that information today. We do know that because it was, you know, Jackson County got the declaration, that it will be the loan application center will be at Rosalie Rescue Squad, and they're hoping to have it open by Thursday of this week. Now, what its hours are going to be and what the phone number's going to be, I'm still not sure. But that was their plan yesterday. Mr. Little with State EMA had talked to Atlanta, FEMA headquarters in Atlanta, and believed that they were going to try to get that up and running by Thursday of this week, and they were going to run it through the 22nd, try to get as many people as they can in. And if they don't get everybody by the 22nd, they are willing to come back after Christmas. Now, with that said as well, keep in mind, you don't have to go to the loan center. You can dial, it's the FEMA number, I'm so sorry, it's 1-800-4FEMA, I believe. But it's, I will get that put on the Facebook, but it's, I mean, you can Google, you know, FEMA disaster assistance, and it all runs through that 800 number. You can put in your application on the phone, on the website. You don't have to go to the loan application center. If you do, you've got somebody to talk to that can answer your questions, but it's kind of like anything else. I mean, it's kind of like a credit card application or a student loan, but you'll explain your situation on the application. They'll call you. One of their guys will come out, they'll make an appointment, come out, look at your damage, and then make their decision from that. So, and again, anybody, it don't have to be just in the storm path. Say you lived in, you know, Valley Head or on Lookout Mountain and got some wind damage on your roof, and you know your new roof, that qualifies. Or for that matter, anywhere else in the county, as long as it's in any of the counties that touch DeKalb.
Thank you, Mr. Clifford.
Does that answer your question, sir?
Yes. I just want everybody to know there'll be updates on the Facebook page and get some of that information.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. I just want to say, you know, I can, I'm familiar with the emergency response, mitigation, recovery, is what I do outside of here. And you guys did a good job, did a great job. And the one thing that I'd like to point out that everybody needs to, you know, a lot of folks don't appreciate, they don't realize what we have here in DeKalb County, in Alabama, when it comes to emergency services. And like you said, you've got a system, we're able to provide in a very, very expedient manner, and that's something to be proud of. And when, anytime in that line of work, when your peers come up and say, "That's the way we should do it. That's the way, we need to start doing it the way you do it." That's some powerful bragging rights from where I see it and from where you see it. And so I would applaud you for that right there, and just keep up the good work.
Thank you, sir.
Well, thank y'all so much, and again, it's only because you allow us to do what we do. We work for you and the citizen, and that's what we try to get everybody to know, is that this is what we do for them on your behalf. But thank you so much, and like I say, if you can approve that resolution, it'd be much appreciated, and we hope that we don't see you again in this capacity soon. However, be prepared, there are some cold weather coming, and so we believe that we could pay for our mild fall with a bad winter and spring, at least what the National Weather Service tells us. But thank you, gentlemen, I appreciate your time.
Let me make a quick statement while we're talking about this. These volunteer fire departments have done a tremendous job during this event, and then also during all the wildfires that we've had because of the drought. You know, this is the holiday season, a lot of people are generous and donate to different organizations. I would suggest everybody consider donating to your local volunteer fire department. I know a lot of them are cash-strapped right now because they have been having so many firefight, excuse me, wildfires to contend with, and these storms. These guys do a great job, all of them do it on a volunteer basis, and they're a tremendous asset to this county for what they do. So anybody that would consider giving some donations, some charitable work this holiday season, consider that.
Absolutely, and if you don't mind me following up just a little bit, something I did not mention was, is that for the public especially, anybody, if they ask you, anybody who wants to donate to that unmet need fund can do so. Contact my office, and Ms. Katie Powers, the volunteer coordinator, can take care of that, and that's the reason we've established the LTRC, Long-Term Recovery Committee, and VOED. They are the fiscal agent to take care of those needs. So if you do, you know, if anybody wants to donate or contacts you about donating to the storm relief fund, that's how they do that. And then, yes, we do encourage everybody to, you know, especially the rescue squads, the fire departments do get a little bit of tax money from the fire tax, but the rescue squads get nothing, other than what little bit the commission gives them to help out. They get nothing. They're entirely donation-dependent, and that's a good point, that the community, you know, it belongs to the community, but thank y'all for that.
Can you put that donation information up on Facebook?
I will.
I'll share it, we'll make some people share it.
Thank you, sir. I solicite motion, we adopt this resolution that I signed for the emergency declaration.
It's all move.
Your second.
Second.
Motion seconded, discussion. Me and your favorite, let me know, let me know when saying aye. Anyone opposed, that's your objection. Thank you. Mr. Wilks, Revenue Commissioner, train.
Morning. Just real quickly, I have a licensing conference. They're doing January 11th and 12th in Prattville. I'd like to request permission from myself, Lanay Finch and Angie Pass to attend that.
Your Mr. Wilks request, any questions concerning the request? If not, your motion to honor is requested.
My motion to honor is requested.
Your second.
Second.
Motion seconded, discussion. Me and your favorite, let me know when saying aye. Anyone opposed, that's your objection. Thank you, Mr. Wilks.
Thank you.
I didn't mean to leave you out, although, too. I appreciate your job. I'm like Chris, I'm in the insurance industry, so I was at a farm up there that got destroyed early that morning, and it's all your guys out riding around taking, getting estimates. I appreciate that.
I'd like to comment about Mr. Wilks. I deal with most of you at one time or another about various issues, legal issues, matters that come up that you have questions about, but when this man contacts me, he's fully informed of what he's wanting to talk about or the questions he has, and I understand what to do, and I get his work done faster than most because you are so prepared when you call, and you have your staff that way. I've had staff members come, and I thank you for that. It makes my job easier.
Appreciate it.
And costs the county less.
I'll pass that along to them. They do a great job over there, and that's what...
They do.
I appreciate that.
Thank you, sir. That concludes our agenda for today. Our next meeting will be January 11th, 2016. We'll have one meeting in December, as is our custom, but we will meet again January 11th in the new year, 2017. And again, we thank all of you for being here. We wish all of you a very Merry Christmas and health and happy prosperous new year. And that being said, I solicite the motion to adjourn.
Sure, I'm going to move for a pause for a minute. Then, dear, may it...
Gentlemen, I'd like to motion to adjourn. Any of that objections, so am I. Thank you.